Collier County. Board of County Commissioners. Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Airport Authority. Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers. Collier County Government Center. 3299 Tamiami Trail East, 3rd Floor, Naples, Florida 34112. December 12th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4, BCC Chair. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2, BCC Vice Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Bertha Saunders, District 3. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, CRAB Co-Chair. Notice. All persons wishing to speak on an agenda item must register prior to the presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All speakers will receive up to three minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Requests to address the Board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this Board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Ordinance #2003-53 amended by 2004-05 and 2007-24 requires that all lobbyists shall, before engaging in any lobbying activities, including but not limited to addressing the Board, register with the clerk to the Board of the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation or to participate in the proceedings, you are entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Facilities Management Division located at 33 East Tamiami - 3533 East Tamiami Trail or call them at 252-8380. Assistant listening devices for the hearing impaired are available in the Facilities Management Office. Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon to 1:00 p.m. Item 1: invocation and pledge of allegiance. Item 1A, Reverend Beverly Dunkland of Naples United Church of Christ. Item 2: agenda and minutes. 2A: approval of today's regular consent and summary agenda as amended. Ex parte disclosure provided by commission members. Item 2B: October 24 through 25, 2017, BCC regular meeting minutes. 2C: November 7, 2017, BCC infrastructure sales tax and Hurricane Irma after-action workshop meeting minutes. 2D: November 14, 2017, BCC regular meeting minutes. Item 3: awards and recognitions. Item 4: proclamations. 4A: proclamation designating January 6, 2018, as National Religious Freedom Day in Collier County to be accepted by representatives of the Salt and Light Advisory Council. Greg Harper, Father Michael Orsi, Father Philimon Posturis, Pastor Tom Harris, Pastor Rick Baldwin, and Pastor Greg Ball. 4B: proclamation designating January 6 through 14, 2018, as Kindness Awareness Week in Collier County, accepted by Bob Trutuba and his dog Bogart. Item 5: presentations. 5A: presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month for December 2017 to Spring Hill Suites and Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott to be accepted by Tracy Arms, General Manager, and Liz Sanders, Director of Sales. Item 5B: presentation by Mr. John Schmieding, Senior Vice President and Legal Counsel for Arthrex Incorporated regarding their recent expansion of future plans in Collier County. 5C: Hurricane Irma status report from Dan Summers, Bureau of Emergency Services Director. Item 6: public petition. 6A: public petition requests from Stephen Quater requesting relief from paying tax to the Haldem Creek Municipal Services Taxing Unit, MSTU, because of his property is located outside the boundary. Item 7: public comment on general topics not on the current or future agenda. Item 8: Board of Zoning appears. Item 9: advertised public hearings. Item 9A: recommendation to approve the single petition, PL 2001-60002360, within the 2016 Cycle III Gross Management Plan Amendments for transmission to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for Review. Comments response for amendments for specific to the Goodwood Pine Ridge Commercial Infill Sub-District. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. Item 11: County Managers Report. 11A: recommendation to declare that emergency circumstances exist based on damage caused by Hurricane Irma to Collier Creek. Authorize an expenditure procurement process to obtain quotes and negotiate contract. Authorize the county manager as a designated to execute contract to be presented to the Board for after-the-fact approval at the next regularly scheduled commission meeting. Authorize the necessary budget amendments and make a finding that this item promotes tourism. 11B: recommendation to approve the targeted reductions of the Collier County Growth Management Department Development Services fee schedule related to application of plan review fees in the event of Board County Commissioners declare disaster and to apply the targeted reductions retroactively to the fees identified in the petition related to the Lee Williams Fire presented to the Board of October 10, 2017 meeting under 11G, homeowners impacted by Hurricane Irma. 11C: recommendation to waive competition as a single-source vendor and award a contract to U.S. Emergent Technologies in an estimated amount of $1 million for the removal of sand, grit, and debris at the North Carolina Water Reclamation Facility resulting from Hurricane Irma. Item 11D: recommendation to amend professional service agreement #06-4000 with CH2M Hill Incorporated for the updated completion of the design of Vanderbilt Beach Board Expansion Project in the amount of $3,901,850. Item 11E: recommendation to approve the technical assistance inter-local agreement between the county, the Collier County Water and Sewer District, and the City of Everglades. Item 11F: this item to be heard at 11:00 a.m. Recommendation to approve agreement for sale and purchase/lease agreement with CG2 LLC for the purchase and lease of property to accommodate the future Collier County Sports Complex, not to exceed $12,104,2537. Item 11G: recommendation to approve the proposed schedule for project list for county-wide infrastructure sales tax, SRTAX, voter referendum to be held on November 6, 2018, and authorize staff to initiate related actions. 11H: recommendation direct staff to initiate request for information process for two county-owned properties that are suitable for the development of housing that is affordable in accordance with community housing plan. 11I: recommendation direct staff to advertise and bring back for a public hearing in order to submitting the Land Development Code Amendment relating to the off-site native vegetation preservation on January 23, 2018 Board Meeting. 11J: recommendation to adopt the resolution accepting proposal of Pinnacle Public Finance Incorporated to provide the county with a term loan in order to refund portion of the county's special obligation revenue bond series 2010 for net present value interest savings. Approving the form of loan agreement authorizing the issuance of special obligation refunding revenue note series 2017, not to exceed $45 million. Authorizing the payment as such note from covenant to budget and appropriate legally available and non-advisory revenues, delegating certain authority to the Board Chairman and other appropriate officers of the county for the execution delivery of the loan agreement. Item 12: County Attorneys Report. Item 13: other Collier County constitutional officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 14A: Airport Authority. Item 14B: Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the Board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For additional information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586. For Additional Information on Consent Agenda Items, Call (252) 8586.
Item 17: Summary Agenda.